Hi, good evening. We're going to call the Arroyo Grande Planning Commission meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Roof.
Present.
Commissioner Berlin.
Present.
Commissioner Buchanan.
Present.
Commissioner Sacrament.
Here. Thank you, and I am on the agenda to lead us in the flag salute, so if we could all stand, please. Thank you. Moving right into the agenda review, do any of my fellow commissioners want to revise the order of the agenda? Seeing no one, we'll close that item and move into item number five, which is community comments and suggestions. This public comment period is an invitation to members of the community to present issues, thoughts, or suggestions on matters not scheduled on this agenda. Comments should be limited to those matters that are within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. Members of the public may provide public comment in person or remotely by registering and joining the Zoom meeting utilizing the link in the agenda. Do we have any members of the public who would like to give comment at this time? Seeing none in the room, do we have any callers online to make a public comment?
If anybody on Zoom would like to make a comment on items not on tonight's agenda, please raise your hand now or dial star nine if you're calling in. I'm sure we have no raised hands.
Thank you. So I'm going to close that public comment, item number five, and move into written communications, item number six. Do we have any written communications tonight?
None for this evening.
Thank you, Patrick. Moving on to our consent agenda, item number seven, we have the approval of the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? And we have two minutes here, the October 29th special meeting and the November 19th regular meeting. Any questions on either of those? Okay, then I can entertain a motion at this time. Move to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Sacrament.
Yes.
Commissioner Berlin.
Yes.
Commissioner Buchanan.
Yes.
Vice Chair Roof.
Yes. Okay, moving on from our consent agenda, we're now at, moving right along to item number eight, our public hearing, which is our consideration of the recommendation to adopt the active transportation plan. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you. ... awarded funds from the Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant. Subsequently, the city chose K2A as a project consultant to help us staff with the preparation of the document. Put simply, the objective of the ATP is to create a guidebook for making the community a safe and comfortable place to walk, roll, and ride. The ATP contains an inventory of existing bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, identifies key gaps and safety needs, and proposes recommendations for improvements. Throughout this process, a significant effort was made to obtain community engagement and input throughout that process. We had an online survey.
Thank you so much, Andrew. I appreciate it. Doing the audio check, can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. Well, commissioners, good evening. Thank you very much for having me tonight. As Andrew mentioned, my name is Jacob Leon. I am part of the K2A team. We're planners and landscape architects located down in San Diego, but our projects take us all over California, the western region, working on projects such as this active transportation plan. We hope to get that recommendation to take this to city council in January next year. So with that, I will like to go ahead and jump into my presentation if everyone's okay with that.
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, commissioners. And quick visual, can y'all see my screen?
I'm sorry, we are having a little bit of issue with showing your screen, so if you just give us one second, we should be able to fix that.
Absolutely, no problem.
All right, thank you, Jacob. We are now able to see your screen.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Glad that worked out. All right, well, let's get into it. I have approximately fifteen-ish minute presentation, and what I'll be doing is I'll be recapping, as I mentioned earlier, all the hard work that everybody, your community members and ourselves, that we did to present this draft of active transportation plan to you all. So I'll give a little bit of overview. We'll talk about community engagement. We'll get into the recommendations that are included in chapter four and five of the plan itself. And then, as always with these kinds of meetings, Andrew and I are looking forward to answering any questions and comment you may have for this. So, let's go into the overview. I want to give a shout out and acknowledge the various people that have contributed to this project, of course, city staff that have been helping us here, but myself, Joe, Marina, Morgan, who are all, you know, and team players from the K2A team. And of course, we have Michelle Matson from Central Coast Transportation Consulting, a partner of ours over the past decade, working on mobility projects such as this. She's located right here in Morro Bay. So she's been a great team member for this planning process. And I want to give a quick reminder of what an active transportation plan is. And it's about developing improvements that are geared towards improving walking, bicycling, rolling, which includes people on scooters, on skateboards, or wheelchairs, and transit, right? And so, the steps in an active transportation plan include data-driven processes, right? In addition to extensive community engagement, we want to be able to identify gaps in the existing network. We want to be assessing critical data such as where collisions might be occurring. Fieldwork, right, to evaluate existing infrastructure is always part of the planning process. Myself and my team have been out there several times, witnessing and observing the things that are on the ground today, you know, to make informed decisions for the future. A plan like this also includes developing and prioritizing recommendations, because a lot of grant agencies and even elected officials like yourself, our council members, want to know that thought has been put into prioritizing, right, the projects that are presented in the recommendation section of a plan like this. And of course, we always like to provide a little bit of guidance for implementation, because as cheesy as it sounds, we do not want these things to sit on a shelf. We want to make sure that you all actively pursue and try to implement the recommendations that are included in the plan itself. So, the existing conditions analysis that we conducted, it's a big lit review. We do a lot of GIS modeling in order to, again, understand what is on the ground today. We worked together with city staff to develop a community engagement plan to make sure that we were engaging equitably and efficiently with as many community members as possible throughout Arroyo Grande. This information, of course, we use to put together recommendations, right, that we then present it again to the community so that, again, we can vet these ideas and make sure that this is a plan that is going to be used from you all in phase four, being, you know, recommendations and implementation and adoption that, again, this document that could be used for the next ten years effectively. So with active transportation, of course, we have things like crosswalks and curb ramps. We have these, you know, enhanced crossings with flashing beacons. We have things like transit stops and the amenities that are associated with them. For bicycling, we have things like your bike lanes that you currently have throughout the city. We have the bike route markings and signage such as the ones you see here with the stencil markings on the ground. And of course, we were really happy to see that throughout the city, but you're already starting to do some of the enhancements such as like the green bike strapping throughout certain segments in your along your corridors. Transportation, pedestrian scroll lighting, tree canopies, urban greening, all of these are secondary but very important elements of an active transportation plan. So these are also referenced throughout the plan itself and in the recommendations. Your project area, of course, our goal was to work and understand within the city limits, but we also wanted to acknowledge the fact that you have surrounding neighbors and destinations to the, you know, to the west of you all, to the south that are also important, so we took that into account. But activity centers are some of the major things that we want to be connecting to, right? So we have the schools and the parks and the employment centers. These were, these were the destinations that were driving a lot of the recommendations. As I mentioned, we've done, we completed an extensive existing conditions analysis. Collision data, such as the one you see on your screen right here, this is an important one, right? Understanding where collisions are occurring, the type of collisions that are occurring, right? So that we can figure out, are there any infrastructure improvements that can hopefully help diminish and prevent these from happening in the future as well? We, of course, want to acknowledge all the hard work that has gone into the general plan update. So what we did is we took what was presented in the circulation element update, and we overlaid this and we vetted it throughout this planning process. Great work was done previously, and we just wanted to make sure we were building upon this work and identifying any any items that might have been missing or even just changing the classification of a handful of things to better reflect the community engagement process that we completed. One of the things that you noticed in the existing conditions chapter of the plan was, of course, the level of traffic stress. This is a standard analysis that people like ourselves at K2A complete for a plan like this to better understand the condition, the road conditions, and the potential stress that they might be imposing on somebody wanting to walk or ride on these corridors. Of course, the darker the color, red, orange, means the higher level of stress, green meaning less stress, really valuable tool as we were developing recommendations. And honestly, and speaking with community members about their experiences throughout the city. And speaking about engaging with your community members, I'm just really, really happy. And it was really refreshing just to see how engaged your community was throughout this entire planning process. So on this slide, what you're seeing here is a breakdown of everything that our team completed with the amazing help of the city staff. So, for example, we had an online survey where we had over a hundred completed. We had an online common map that we made available throughout the whole planning process. We completed three pop-up events at your Harvest Festival in September 2023 and a full circle experience at ending and doing the last one, just, you know, this past September. We also did one at a farmer's market in the spring of 2024. As Andrew mentioned, we also completed two workshops, one in December 2023 and one recently on the 26th of September, to, again, engage with the community. We had an incredible stakeholder working group as well for this. I know you were all aware of, this is the, I hope you were aware of just how engaged and what I want, I want to say how much they cared about this plan. People from, you know, the Chamber Commerce, people from Caltrans, yeah, some representatives from Grover Beach were also here, which is really wonderful working group, and I'm very grateful for their participation and them wanting to see, you know, improvements in your community here in Arroyo Grande. So I just want to make sure I acknowledge them and I give them a special shout out as well. We also conducted a city council presentation in October, and this was an update to them. We wanted to prep them, you know, about, give them an update such as this one, but also take into account their feedback and their commentary so that we can make any potential adjustments to the recommendations that were presented to them. So, again, I'm really grateful for all of the engagement and stakeholder engagement that we conducted, and I think it really presented itself in a robust plan that you've all had a chance to look at. Again, as I mentioned, these community members just excited about the potential, right, for the future, letting us know their issues and concerns and them learning about the potential opportunities, the things that could make walking, biking, and getting around Arroyo Grande just better. So, again, I have hundreds of pictures of all the engagement that we did. All those pictures will be given to Andrew and Brian so that you can all use in the future for any, any applications or grant processes that you might want to explore. Quick, three bullets I want to quickly mention here about some of the takeaways, right? Everybody agrees that we want to see safe and efficient active transportation facilities throughout the community. They acknowledge a lot of the great work that's already happening, but they want to see more of it, right? They want to make sure that we have complete sidewalk networks, that we have connected bicycle network without any gaps. We want to make sure that the areas around schools, parks, the village, the library, and big commercial corridors are well-suited for people, right? So they could feel comfortable along these spaces. Regarding the corridors, we heard over and over commentary about Grand Avenue, Ranch Street, Halcyon, Fair Oaks, and Oak Park. And, of course, we took this into consideration during the recommendations phase. With that all being said, right, we started putting together the actual draft plan itself. And so, what you all had a chance to review is a document, right, that is broken up into six major sections, right? We have an executive summary, we have an introduction, and a chapter dedicated to all that existing conditions analysis. Chapter three is all about community engagement, so infographics, pictures, summaries, key takeaways from all the engagement that we conducted. Chapter four is an action transportation toolkit. These are pictures and descriptions of all the many types of facilities and potential recommendations that a city like yourselves can use in order to improve active transportation, many of which are found in chapter five, and chapter five being the robust recommendations chapter of the plan itself. So, as you can see, within each chapter, there are many subsections. Again, we wanted to make sure that this active transportation plan, as with every plan that we complete at K2A, is abiding by the standard table of contents that agencies such as Caltrans is looking out for to ensure that all major elements are included in a comprehensive plan like itself. And so, again, these are all things that you've had a chance to look at, and I hope revisit in the future, ongoing, right, to make sure that we're making progress here in your community. I'm going to spend a little bit talking about the proposed bike network, right? This is one of the major elements of the plan itself. So, I want to begin by briefly describing the type of bicycle facilities that are found. Of course, some that are already existing within your community, but of course, some that are being recommended in the proposed bike network. So the color coding is on purpose, right? What you're seeing is every red line is representing a multi-use path, such as the one right here, right? These are the separated facilities away or elevated away from moving vehicles, and these are the most beloved, of course, everybody wants these everywhere because they're protected, people feel comfortable, and it provides the most enjoyable experience. Of course, they take up the most space out of most of the facilities that we have here. Class two bike lanes, those are the blue lines that you see on the maps. These are your standard bike lanes that you have, many of which you have throughout the city already. The green lines are these class three bike routes. These bicycle routes are found on neighborhood streets that are 25 miles per hour or lower. They're quieter, they provide, they typically provide space, right, for residents to comfortably ride their bike without feeling that they're competing with moving vehicles on higher speeds, higher volume areas. And of course, we've introduced and we're recommending the opportunity to hopefully have class four separated bikeways, right? These are the on-street dedicated bike facilities that have a physical, vertical type of separation, either through a raised curb plant here, such as the picture you see here, or often, right, we have the flex posts that provide that a vertical separation. So these are the four colors and the four types of recommendations that are found in chapter five of the planet. So, we wanted to build upon what was already existing. So this map that you're seeing on your screen are the existing bicycle facilities that we started with. We have about fifteen miles of class one, two, and three bicycle facilities within your city. So we wanted to then take what we learned from the circulation element, do community engagement, provide professional insight from the K2A team in order to now present this figure, right, the proposed bike network that now complements the existing bicycle network that the city currently has right now. So what you're seeing here is an improved, more comprehensive bike network that one day will just allow your community, right, to enjoy, get to and from their destinations. So we have about 7.6 miles of proposed class one multi-use paths. Those are the red lines. We have almost 20 miles of expanded bicycle lanes. Those are all the blue, the solid, the dash blue lines that are adding to the existing bike lanes you currently have. We have about eleven and a half miles of bicycle routes along your quiet residential streets. And we are proposing approximately 10 miles of those separated class four bikeways and/or buffered bike lanes in constrained areas for a total of approximately 49 miles compared to those 15 miles that you currently have. So again, it really was about looking at how do we connect to your destinations, the schools, the parks, with the appropriate facility to provide the biggest type of comfort while also acknowledging the ride-away constraints that are, that we have to deal with, right? The, how much space we have curb-to-curb along some of these corridors. So this, this plan was presented, was vetted by the community with city staff, and it's, of course, hopefully one that you were all also happy with. And we can get into this a little bit more during the Q and A, but I wanted to provide you all that kind of brief background and what these all colors and the lines mean for this map itself. I mentioned prioritization earlier on in my presentation. Prioritization of the bicycle facilities is really important because we want to not only guide commissioners like yourselves and your council members, but city staff as to how and we can, what to implement first or in some kind of order. We worked with the stakeholders, with the stakeholder, with the working group and your staff to use this criteria that you see on your screen, apply a weight to it. And once we ran it through our modeling program, we were able to develop a prioritization of the projects which are found in chapter five of the plan. But I want to just quickly mention these streets that are, were identified as high priority projects. Of course, Grand, Elm, Fair Oaks, Branch, Oak Park, Alder, Farrell, Soto, but near Soto Park, Ash Street, and Halcyon. Of course, acknowledging all the in-depth work that's already been happening with the Halcyon Complete Streets Plan. Pedestrian improvements are a critical component of the recommendations for a plan like this as well. Of course, a lot of people, pedestrians will benefit from the bicycle recommendations that are being proposed, but we wanted to make sure that we were looking at improving the pedestrian environment. So again, things like crosswalks, curb ramps, lighting, enhanced crossings like the beacons and our LED stop signs, these are things we were discussing and vetting and proposing to, again, improve the pedestrian environment throughout your community. This figure that you can find in chapter five of the plan highlights a variety of pedestrian improvements that the city and your staff can use as, almost as a checklist. When the opportunity presents itself, right, when there's funding available, they could start chipping away at these various pedestrian recommendations that will complement the bicycle enhancements that we just talked about. Safe routes to school and the recommendations. I was really happy when, when I came across this project and grateful that we were selected. I was really happy to see that there was a safe routes to school component of this active transportation plan. Not every ATP has safe routes to school. Many times, a community like yourself will do a whole dedicated safe routes to school plan. So what we, I was happy to work with our team and your working group and staff to develop recommendations around the schools in Arroyo Grande. So, and of course, we wanted to also highlight Fair Grove, which is right on the, you know, right on the edge of the city. We know a lot of residents go to that elementary school. But we looked at all the schools we developed, we analyzed them, we have infographics, stats, and we're able to develop recommendations within a quarter-mile radius around each school. So that's your, you know, approximately five to 10-minute block shed around each of these schools. Things like crosswalks, things like missing curb ramps or truncated domes, you know, making sure we're meeting some of those ADA requirements. But also, as you can see in these sample screenshots from the report, we also overlaid the recommended bike network on top of that to show how everything kind of comes together really nicely. So if you have any questions on some of these safe routes to school recommendations, we can talk about them later in the Q and A. Lastly, in the active transportation scope of work, we were also tasked to look at three priority projects. And so, through coordination with the working group and city staff and using the prioritization process that was conducted earlier on, we identified Grand, Elm, and Fair Oaks as three priority projects for us to provide planning level, high-level conceptual callouts and drawings for. This is a great way to supplement the basic elements, the standard elements of an active transportation plan. So we looked at Grand Avenue and the opportunities to improve, right, by adding buffered bike lanes or separated bikeways and various pedestrian improvements. We looked at Elm Street, a really important north-south corridor, and looking at bike route or buffered bike lane type of improvements here. And of course, Fair Oaks, another important east, an important east-west corridor that connects many destinations. We looked at the possibilities for that. So those recommendations and descriptions and summaries are included, again, in chapter five of the plan. Wanted to give, provide a quick visual where these three priority projects are located. Again, you can see here with this overly map how it's connected to other bikeways, how it's connected to schools, to parks, and to major destinations throughout the community. The cut sheets are, here's an example of what the cut sheets look like in chapter five. Again, providing infographics, summaries, recommendations, and graphics that can be easily used to make and make informed decisions in the future, whether the city is applying for another Caltrans grant or if we're all, if you're all deciding on what project to move forward with for further designing and engineering. So, again, really happy that we're able to also provide this kind of work in an active transportation plan because ATPs also often don't include this type of scope of work. So, very comprehensive, very robust active transportation plan that you all were able to ask us to do for you all. I want to wrap up the presentation by just letting you all know that, of course, we're going to do a Q and A with you all right here. Andrew and I will do our best to answer your questions. Hopefully, we will get your recommendation to bring this plan and a similar presentation to council for adoption in January. And since the Caltrans grant that is funding this project closes in February, it is our responsibility to ensure that everything, all files, all materials, everything is closed out and turned in over to you all by the end of February. Everything that was produced, or all the pictures, all the GIS mapping, everything that we did is yours, and we will be turning everything over to you all at the end of February. So, I, once again, I want to thank you all for having me here and giving me the opportunity to present all of the work that's been put into this. And I am, Andrew and I are excited and happy to answer any questions you all may have. Thank you all. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. I'm going to turn to my fellow commissioners to see if anyone wants to start us off with questions. Commissioner Berlin, you want to start? Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Jacob. That was awesome. Great power, power walk through that. I can't believe you did that in 15 minutes, but whatever, there's a lot, a lot of info. We were all, I think, taken back with the volume of material for us to digest coming into the meeting. So thank you for all your hard work, first of all. The questions I have are pretty routine, and I think a lot of the answers exist in the document as it exists, but I do have a few things based on what you were talking about tonight. First of all, in regards to how does the ATP align with the city's general plan? You talked about circulation element, and I understand that aspect of it, but is there also interplay with climate action plan, housing element, and other aspects of our general plan that would also behoove us to be thinking about while we're looking at this aspect? I mean, that's kind of an overreaching question, but that's where I'll leave it.
Great. No, that's an excellent question, and I'll be happy to kick off, and Andrew can jump in and elaborate. The, all of, all of the elements of the general plan are always taken into consideration with an active transportation plan because transportation is the most fundamental thing as of a Because transportation is the most fundamental thing as of a per- the person can do within their community. So we are looking at housing, we are looking at, you know, climate, anything related to climate and sustainability. We'll look at, of course, all the hard work that was done with the circulation element update. Transportation is interwoven into everything. So I just, the simple answer is yes, Commissioner, uh it has overreaching and overlapping goals and policies. Um all the time with uh uh with the general plan itself. And it's a very exciting, right, that you're all going through the general plan update right now as well. You can take this comprehensive plan and the work that was done into the circulation and use it as. Um as you're updating other elements um so as such as like you mentioned. So I the what I want to say is that it's not ignored, it's never ignored in any kind of A- ATP that that we do. And and conversations with staff about those elements um were taken into consideration.
Okay, great. Thank thank you for that. Um did you want to add something, Andrew? You don't have to.
Yeah, I'll just add that within the circulation element, there are specific policies that direct staff to develop and adopt an active transportation plan. Um especially as it relates to safe routes to school. Um and then there's also a policy that encourages the ATP to replace the city's existing um. Trails master plan. So this will take that place and um provide that roadmap and outline for establishing those active transportation routes.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's good to know. I I wasn't aware of that. Um uh o- other question as far as plan, vision and goals. How how does the ATP um can maybe explain how how it? How does that align with things that are happening regionally, statewide and even federally? And I'm just thinking of, I I think I read in some of the um literature today regarding the ATP. You've consulted with SlowCog, obviously SlowCog. In Slend Lewis County, every county has their council of governments that basically is an interface between the various municipalities. So I'm just wondering, how does the ATP specifically that you've created for a Rojo Grande? How how is that interactive with things that are happening regionally and even statewide and federally?
Absolutely. It 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 is a responsibility of the consultant and this and your your staff to never work in asylum, right? We want to always make sure that we are acknowledging the impact, not only within your community, but your neighbors, county, statewide, et cetera. So we've conducted a literature review of all of the uh work that had been done in the past, right? We look at all the SlowCog RTP plan um that was recently completed completed a few years ago to make sure that. Our recommendations or any priorities or policies are in accordance and not not conflicting with it. This being a Caltrans funded ATP also obligates us to make sure that we are also supporting and. Um augmenting any policies or goals that Caltrans has. And they have several ATP complete streets policies, right, that even they are working towards doing and improving. So all of that is considered and it is also, you know, included for consistency purposes. We have a very robust uh spreadsheet that where our team here at K two A, we were keeping track of. Where this recommendation or issue came from, was it in a previous document, is it in accordance? Did we deviate and if so, did we explain why we deviated and why the recommendation might have been different? So we have all of that um uh acknowledged and written down, you know, in spreadsheet format. And and again, it's for transparency purposes, right? We want to be able to defend and be able to explain to you all why certain things, certain decisions were made. But yes, we um it was a quite a robust lit review that we conducted because there's a lot happening, not only within the state, but within Slow County itself. And your neighbors, right, Grover Beach, and we we know they recently working with Cal Poly Slow. Um planning department, they're gonna be doing their, if I'm not mistaken, their own ATP plan. And they're gonna be looking at to see what our recommendations along the border are. And so again, it's kind of exciting to keep that momentum going, right, up between everybody.
Great, yeah, thank you. Um I I think you touched on it and that certainly your answer was comprehensive, appreciate that. Because Caltrans, as as we know, I mean. We are a town that's on both sides of the one-on-one freeway. And those of us that have lived in this area long enough have seen the impacts to one-on-one locally. I mean, you San Diego guys are used to that stuff called traffic. We haven't had traffic up here forever, but we're definitely having it now. So uh that's just a side comment. So so certainly Caltrans, I'm glad they have an active role in what's happening in our community. And obviously, um I like to hear that we're not operating in a silo. Because I think there's uh um tons of opportunities to look for funding. When we do it collectively with with our neighbors. So, all right, that's a comment. Sorry, I'll I'll continue on with a few, just a few more questions if you don't mind. Um so uh on the public engagement aspect, certainly I appreciate you've been on this from the get-go. Uh our community i- i- is very um. Active, I'll say, in so some ways, but it's hard for us to get numbers up. And I saw some of the numbers you put up. You had a hundred and one people roughly participate in the beginning survey. Uh two harvest festivals and and various things. So i- i- in total, I'm just kind of curious. Would you say that the numbers of active participants in this ATP? Uh is exceeding a thousand people or less than a thousand people collectively? I if I could ask you roughly ballpark figure?
No, um great question. I would say we were probably shy, just shy of a thousand, that was the number you were thinking of. Um it it's it it depends, right, uh on the uh I'm just gonna make a light joke. The level of controversy that our project is is gonna also determine how many people come out, right, and and participate. Um I so uh thankfully, this wasn't too controversial of a project. And the the many people that we did speak with over the past eighteen months were just grateful, right? That you were all engaging in this planning process and um excited to share their concerns and also their big ideas. But I would say just under probably a thousand would be a safe number if I'm being honest with you.
Yeah, no, no, I appreciate that. We're experiencing the same kind of a feedback um with the general plan update. Uh I mean, the people that are participating are grateful to have that opportunity, but it's hard to get significant numbers. For a town of twenty thousand people, it's it's hard to get many people to participate. So, okay, thank you for that. Um y- 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 one of the things you put up there was the bicycle stress reduction factors. And I know that's one of the things, I mean. We live in a fairly hilly area, but there's plenty of flat parts. But but I think the resistance that is expressed in the graph that you provided is. Some of the streets and the traffic don't lend itself to coexisting with bike traffic. And so the areas that all express the highest level of bicycle stress are our busiest corridors. So the intent of what I heard you spell out was to try to reduce those bicycle stress areas. And in thereby increase the areas where people feel safe riding their bike or rolling or whatever, whatever they're walking even. So um some of the strategies you have. I I get th- the intent of those. S- some of those cost a lot more money than than others. And so my question is, are there methodologies in place that could help? Get funding for some of the more expensive yet um higher impact? I mean, I mean, are there specific? My question, I guess, is are there deeper wells if we get into trying to alter? Um the way we drive on streets in relation to pedestrian traffic?
Yeah. This, that is, let me. Let me put my thoughts together. You're asking a really important question that also takes into account culture, right? Mind shift with how we as a community or your community identifies transportation and active transportation. It's the ongoing battle of vehicular priorities versus a pedestrian or cyclist, right? It's, you know, not everybody has the luxury or the opportunity or the privilege, right, to have a vehicle to get to and from their destinations. People rely on walking and the buses, our bicycles to get there. So you were all, it's it's not just AG, right? It's everywhere in the country where we're working on plans like this. Thankfully, Commissioner, when a city like yourself wants to uh pursue a, let's call it revolutionary. Or comprehensive and um outstanding project like let's we'll take Grant Avenue, for example, or even Fair Oaks. When you have recommendations that provide a bigger, better comfort, when you have things that, how you're showcasing, you're connecting schools uh and parks. How you're trying to address that level of stress and by and with the recommendation that is intended to lower that stress. And when you create that narrative and when you back it up with the data like collisions, engagement. Um and all of these other modeling things that we've completed for you all, then you have a story and a narrative that. Is stronger when you are trying to apply for, let's say, a ground that is gonna that that has a deeper well. Um I'm sad to report that um uh five hundred thousand dollars just doesn't do anything anymore. You need to be going over pursuing multimillion dollar projects. And I know that sounds scary and that sounds like a lot, but there is many out there for big projects that. Where a city is not afraid, you know, to make a bit of change. And when you have the support, it can be done and they do get awarded. And if I may add, because I can go on and on with this kind of question, because it's just, it's it's such a great question. I will say, though, it is getting very competitive, right, with a lot of the grant sources that are out there. Agencies like Caltrans, right, with through their ATP program that they do every two years. There, you know, well, is there funding at the co- at the California level? That's one thing, right, with budget. But when there is good funding, they are awarding projects that are longer and that are multipurpose. They're not gonna give you money for a little bit of stopping some pain on the ground and calling it a day. There are get, there are awarding cities who are wanting to transform their corridors and be multi-benefit and multipurpose. And thankfully, there is money for that. Um so that I I guess I will stop there, because like I said, I could go on.
Yeah, I I know it's a very complex question, but I appreciate hearing your insight on that. So and I get I get what you're saying, appreciate your answer. Um um one of the things, again, I kind of outlined my questions in various components. One of them was, of course, the key to implementing so many of these things is about funding and timelines. And so I I know it was interesting to hear how the uh criteria was set up to evaluate. And prioritize, you know, based on stakeholders and various people in the community deciding what the priorities were, which is fine. My question is, uh the useful life of the ATP is roughly ten years, is it? Did I hear you say that?
Correct, every seven to ten years, the city is encouraged to update it.
Okay, and I think the general plan's every twenty years, if I'm not mistaken, is that right? Yeah, I isn't that right, twenty years? Okay, I I'm just trying to think out loud, a- aloud. One of the questions I have about um. Because one of the um stakeholders is the public transit companies. And that's been a tough area, probably everywhere. But um to get more ridership of public transportation and to have hubs or various strategies. And so my question specifically on on Aurora Grande's ATP. How much involvement have you had with Rideshare or Slow County Transit? Uh on the public transportation providers, how how much have they been a part of your research?
They were part of the stakeholder working group. So it was, we were happy to know that, to see that they were elected a person to uh participate on the working group. Um so that was one, that was important and we're happy for that. We also took into account and acknowledged the routes and the the existing transit stops and when we were doing our existing conditions analysis. And of course, when developing recommendations, making sure that we were being multi-benefit, multipurpose at at all times. The, we didn't go much further than that. Of course, uh your transportation agency can take these recommendations when they're making um a decision, when they're making decisions about. You know, we need to add more amenities or or, you know, talk about frequencies or improve frequency or new routes. That's what outside of the realm of this, but they could build upon the feedback and the recommendations that we have right here.
Okay, fair enough. Um I won't go too much longer. Um o- one of the que- questions I have is, wh- what metrics will be used to evaluate the success of the ATP? Like, are we gonna look at increases in walking and biking and reductions in vehicle miles traveled? I mean, how how do we know? Once you've done your part of it and given us the the nice package you put together. How are we gonna evaluate how successful we are in the A- AT, in utilizing the ATP you've come up with? So what, in other words, how do we measure how well we're doing?
Yeah, there's a couple of strategies and things that your your staff can do. We, they could kind of, of course, just seeing year after year, fashion analysis, collision data, right? If if you were to make recommendations and if you're seeing over the long term a reduction, that could be a way to measure success. Conducting regular bicycle pedestrian counts is one of the most easiest and cost-effective ways to understand, to do some before and after. So let's say, for example, if you you will find money for Elm Street, right, to do the recommendations that we have included. Do some counts right before the project gets started and then track one, two, three years. Um the the difference and hopefully you'll see a an increased number with that. Um you know, you can always also do the what and bike counts around the schools and the parks, right? Those are two major areas, so you can focus around those areas. Because we know that people want to be able to walk or bike to the school or the park. Maybe not if they're trying to do a Costco haul, right, but at least to the their local park. And maybe so you can um target your counts around those. And lastly, you know, with any kind of mode share data, when, you know, so if you can see if there are people. But if you do annual surveys, which most cities do, right, satisfaction surveys at 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 an annual level. Uh you can ask questions about walking and biking, use transit. And then over, let's say, the life of this plant over the next ten years, hopefully you will also see an increase if if you're implementing these recommendations. So there's there's a whole suite of things and those are, well, we'll pass those on to Andrew and the team. And and of course, if I'm not mistaken, they're included um in some of the um. Yeah, the 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 last, towards the end of chapter five, where we talk about programs and policies and that sort of thing.
Great, yeah, that that'd be helpful. I I think um uh as part of the package to 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 take your prescriptions for how we evaluate going forward. So that's, I appreciate your answer. Thank you for that. Um I'll just, I'll wrap it up here. Um wh- one of the questions I have is, i- is there any addressing in the ATP? Or maybe this happens on the city level with municipal code considerations? Uh is there any ability to look at and modify or assess uh vehicle code or municipal code? Speed limits, traffic calming measures? I- is that, I mean, I I think that's a part of the prescriptions that you have offered in the ATP. How how does the city go about implementing that? Is that up to um? You know, I don't, the community development director and environmental, I I mean, how does that go about? As far as implementing some of the um traffic calming measures, I'll guess, I'll just leave it at that.
Yes, it has to be a coordinated effort between planning and public works. Or where I've um I'm so sorry, I forget where transfer transportation, traffic engineering is, is slots under um within your city. But it has to be a coordinated effort because it's one of those things of the chicken or the egg, right? Where you want to do, you want to build something, but the data says no, because speeds are too high. Well, you're trying to reduce speeds by doing the thing that you're recommending. So it's it's a constant battle in in the world that we live in with mobility, transportation planning. But thankfully, there have been changes um at the state level that helped determine what's called, you know, a level of service and that sort of thing. Where now there's more flexibility, where you can, through design. Introduce a traffic calming elements that will bring the speed down. Before year, a decade ago, you would have your hands tied because the speeds up, you know, dictated what you could do. So I'm I'm just glad that things have been changing at the state level and so there is flexibility, but it is a a joint effort. And you got, you you have to do it responsibly, right? You're you're not gonna go a fifty mile per hour street down to twenty-five, you know, just like that, right? There's other things, you know, that the right away, the the adjacent uses all kind of are are needed to be taken into consideration. But it's not impossible and and we've made really good progress in this world of planning um to to make those things happen.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and uh look forward to talking with you more about it. Thank you, Mr. Leon.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Berlin. Um Commissioner Sacrosan or Commissioner Buchanan, you want to go next?
Uh thank you so much for your really thorough presentation. And I feel like Commissioner Berlin has always covered a lot of what I wanted to cover. So I don't have a whole lot of work left to do. Um I want to say. I mean, the nitty-gritty i- is what it is. Um I do appreciate the a- approach of um starting with the community and also going back to the community. My questions are, um. Are there, in your experience, cities that would be as comparable as possible to Aurora Grande's? Um where you have as a firm created an ATP that you have seen implemented, whether in small or a large part? Um effectively?
Absolutely. Yes, no, no, I I I I totally understand where the question's coming from. And the answer is, uh there will always be um examples and case studies that are compar- comparable to Aurora Grande. For the size of itself and even the unique characteristics, right, of being in a um, you know, top- topography, right? Um your, the how the freeway splits the city right in half, and that's such a common thing in throughout California or other parts, you know, and and projects that I've worked in. Um or even just like tourism and your village and how people from outside Aurora Grande come and enjoy some of the great things that are happening there. Um so yes, we have um examples like this and not everything's perfect, right? Everybody's gonna have their nuances and their controversies or their limitations. Uh but it it is rewarding for me over the past twelve years that I've been doing this to be able to see how little by little the change is being made. Um and so. Um, and so it's just, it needs to be, you know, taken one step at a time, and I think you are positioned really well with just the, how, at the same time, how compact the city can be. Um, and, you know, on either side of the freeway, you could really make some improvements. I will, I will say though, that, you know, to be honest with you, that that there are challenges, right, that as you all know, I know, I'm no impressionist of the choir. How one on one has provided um some barriers, right, for a lot of this kinda thing. Um, and it's just one of the things we have to acknowledge, right, and accept and figure out how to work around. Uh, but overall, yes, I'm I'm just, I I'm I'm excited for the future, uh, you can all continue building and having a great network for for walking and biking and taking transit throughout your community.
Thank you, um, that's, that's heartening. Um, can I ask, for example, adding in these like class, um, one through four bike lane or, excuse me, facilities, I guess is the word. What city in your experience over the last twelve years do you think has been most effective at implementing recommendations such as these, that you think would be comparable to AG?
For a small city like that, I'm trying to think, so within the county or or anywhere like where I may have worked in?
A- anywhere you may have worked in.
Yeah, well, I will take, for example, we completed the ATP for Paso Robles, um, several years ago. And a community similar with diverse needs, tourism, um freeway, talk about freeway, right, also, you know, splitting a community. Um, so they've been um working hard with and incorporating their their recommendations. Um, we also worked in Atascadero and working with their bike and pedestrian network over there as well. Um, so similarly, they've they've gone through that, and of course, um, you know, it, we don't wanna be disrespectful, like comparing your your to other cities. Cause sometimes we hear that from some of our clients, but you um, you all know how aggressive slow has been with implementing um their network throughout throughout their city. So you have some very good neighbors within your county, um, that you can look to and lean on and ask questions and ask for advice. Cause they've all gone through their challenges, it's not all been perfect, obviously, uh, but you have some really great examples there, um, within. Down here in Orange County, we've done dozens of ATPs, there are many cities, um, that are maybe closer to the fifty, sixty thousand um, range, um, like Costa Mesa or um, Grand Terrace that we've completed, that they've also little by little chipped away. They have a big car culture down there, as you can imagine, so they've had to go through those types of challenges, but they've made some, some pretty good progress. And if you're interested, I'm really happy to email Andrew a list of some of these comparable examples, if you just wanna do some of your own digging, uh. We can kinda give you that list, uh, when, and so in your free time, you can kinda see what they've been up to.
No, I I think that's really helpful, even just knowing, you know, Paso Robles and Atascadero, I think that that um will speak to a lot of constituents as uh, as a good comparison, because most people in Aurora Grande are fairly familiar with those areas, and they are somewhat similar in a lot of ways to to AG. Part of your recommendations, um, really spoke to me in terms of how it was broken up. And we didn't go in depth on your presentation, but um, in the, I guess, the packet that we got. Um, I liked that some of it wasn't necessarily cost heavy. Um, everything comes at a cost, but for example, continuing outreach just as a city, encouraging participation and education of the public, um, that was really uh encouraging to see. Um, what I did notice was a recommendation to coordinate with Slow RTA and Socotransit to improve facilities along bus routes to help specifically address the first last mile program or problem, excuse me, um, that, that seems very important to me, because that seems like a very big barrier um, for a lot of people from, to deter them from taking public transit. So, um, how high on your list of recommendations would you put installing safe and comfortable bike facilities connecting that or addressing those issues?
It would be the transit related um criteria, if I, if I could say it that way. Lands about the middle, Commissioner. Um, it wasn't the the highest priority and it wasn't the lowest, but through the working groups, since we had a representative there. We wanted to acknowledge and also respect the fact that they are vested in this, this type of master planning work. Um, and so through that kinda coordination with the city, we wanted to make sure that we were acknowledging first last mile um, planning philosophy and infrastructure. Um, so yeah, it's right around the middle, uh, in this kinda planning. Other communities that are more urbanized, maybe have a higher disadvantaged community, right, on the, you know, if you look at the socioeconomic split. Um, and that kinda dated, a transit ridership and a first last mile could be in the top three important criteria. So there are differences, right, but for your community, it was, it was towards the middle.
Thank you, that's helpful. Uh, that's all I've got right now, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Sacrosan, Commissioner Buchanan?
Yeah, thanks, I have a few questions here, um, so, uh, first question, uh, I'll just uh, to illustrate the point, on uh, page one fifty nine, uh, there's a a map of uh, the proposed uh network for around uh Paulding Middle School proposes a class three bikeway up um, up the hill there, uh, let me pull up the map, yep, up Crown Hill there. And so just looking at this specifically, that's, that stands out to me as 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 a potential design that could cause a lot of conflict. Uh, you have kids biking uphill, uh, impatient, potentially impatient drivers behind them. Uh, but I I understand there's uh constraints there, there's, it's a narrower street, there's street, existing street parking there. Um, you know, in some uh prioritization of that street, uh, you know, mine mainly. But removing parking should probably take priority over uh building a a a street around a s- school into a class three share. Uh, but I understand there's, uh, again, other competing priorities there with that existing parking. Could you maybe just um walk me through specifically on that site? And then just more generally, the decision framework that goes into um, making decisions like that related to existing conditions with parking and uh use of the roadway when there are competing interests in this plan?
No, great question, Commissioner, competing interest is the balancing act that we have to do when we're developing these recommendations. So as you mentioned, parking is a, the context of the neighborhood and parking is always, is one important element. The right away, as you mentioned, very narrow street. So when you don't have the right away to do what you wanna do, like provide a bike lane instead of a of just stencils on the ground and and signage to as a class three, which is what we, what we are recommending. Those, those are all, that, those are all competing topography, hill, it's pretty hilly around Paulding. It is one of the most challenging areas within your city, uh, if I, if I could say, trying to figure out how we can make this quarter mile, half mile area around Paulding better. It it is unfortunate just how tough it really is right around the school. Um, so all of that is taken into consideration, co- conversation with staff and trying to get their insight on like what could be the bigger priority with these competing um elements. And oftentimes, uh, Commissioner, it's doing what's gonna, um, what makes the sense with implementation, with funding um, with the context, and then testing it out with the community, presenting it to the community or with people like yourself, the commissioners. And seeing if that, that is okay with you all. When it's something controversial like parking, the city will need to go through more extensive um survey, like door to door survey, asking questions like, hey, to provide a better facility, it means removing parking, how how is this gonna impact you? That, as you can only imagine, will, you know, will will require a lot more work, right, and more coordination, and it can't be done, right? It's all about the mindset and maybe the culture that um, that the city wants to establish for themselves. So these, these are hard questions you have to um ask yourselves also. Um, so as, at least for us consult, the consultants, we'll, we'll do our best to find the balance, what makes, what what could make the most sense? And then kinda do the the dance, the back and forth. Um, I know I kind of went around and 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 a circle with what you're saying, uh, uh, cause it is a comp- you're asking really complicated, really important question. Uh, because it is always about the competing priorities, but um, I would encourage you all to really think about as you look over in the future, like what are what are the concessions you wanna make in order to make walking, biking better? And is the neighborhood or your community in that specific area gonna support that? And what's that battle gonna look like, if if it is a battle that you're, you're willing to take on? It's not an easy answer, an easy thing to do, unfortunately.
Yeah, great, yeah, thanks, that that definitely answers my question, and um, so it seems like there's an implied priority here to maintain existing on-street parking where it exists, and that, you know, um, could have been communicated a number of ways, just through uh conversation with staff or stakeholders here. Uh, but it it is, appears to be implicit in uh our d- our proposed design around schools here. I I'm wondering if there is a way that you have made that decision framework, those priorities more explicit in plans like this, and also provided a strategy in these plans for, I I think it's exactly like you described, just making it explicit that you hope to have further conversations with the community around potentially reshifting thy, those priorities. Do you see a way that that could be, again, more explicit in this plan in some of these areas? Um, uh, there's a few places around this, the uh, safe routes to school section here that um, I see similar conditions where we're explicitly prioritizing existing on-street parking over what would be a safer route uh, for, um, and less stressful route for uh cyclists, pedestrians and less stressful for drivers too, if if they don't have to sit behind, um, you know, a kid pedaling to school. Uh, do you say, see a way to encode that decision framework or or those priorities in either, in the 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 safe routes to school section here, or just any other larger discussion around the uh ATP?
Uh, absolutely, and I think that's something that if we wanna take your feedback, and I will need to and I will have a conversation with Andrew and Brian about how we can maybe point that out more explicitly um, and leave language in the report itself about, you know, this is being recommended because of certain constraints, um, right, uh, that are on the ground. But when the opportunity presents itself to think about a different facility with um paradise shift, right, on how we look at our environment and walking and biking and and deprioritizing vehicles, right? That, we wanna leave the opportunity for you all, so I I believe there is an opportunity to have a a couple of sentences in that section to talk about that priority, so that at least you all have maybe an a a way to point back to the ATP on a certain page to revisit that conversation a- in the future. Um, so yeah, it's, it's definitely one of the, the hardest things I have to do as a, as a consultant with this um, the culture of of park and driving, um, when we're trying to develop these um extra transportation facilities. So I'll take note of that, and um Andrew and Brian, we can, we can talk about that and see what we can add to the report, and specifically under the safe routes to school. But feel free to email us and point out some areas, and that will, we can acknowledge um your feedback as well.
Yeah, that'd be great, cause I wouldn't want that, and there's political implications here, but I wouldn't wanna, I would, again, I wanna be explicit that that is a trade off we're making here that doesn't need to be made unless uh we're totally comfortable with the status quo. So, yeah, if if there's a way to add that in there, and I'll, I'll call that out later in the meeting too. Um, but, um, so, uh, next question is um around, you know, it's come up in a couple of questions already, the the difficulty we have, uh, connecting, having a connected network that's safer bicyclists and pedestrians with uh the freeway running down uh the middle of the city. We have a couple of overpasses that are hard to navigate, uh, the Grand Ave overpass. It uh stresses me out, makes me pretty sad seeing kids walking bike into school across there every day. Uh, it's called out there as potential improvements, but also requires a uh, a traffic study. Um, could you just walk us through, or if if staff has a better idea of how this would work? What the, what that timeline might look like and what the steps required to have that traffic study done and any um, outcomes that might result of that traffic study, like what is, what does that process look like?
I am happy to answer the question, but Andrew, I I think I'd appreciate your help too, knowing um the history with conducting these kinds of studies with partner agencies like Caltrans, but um Commissioner, we we want to specifically call it out, we wanna leave a a label, as you saw in the plan that things need to be studied further, cause an ATP is a planning level document, we wanna, we wanna be as detailed as we can be, but it is still a planning document, it's about providing guidance for the next steps that need to come. We do not wanna ignore the unfortunate complications, right, that um the freeway is having in in these areas, you know, near Grand or um, near near Fire Oaks as well. So it is our responsibility to call it out and make sure that these conversations are taking place with such a behemoth of an agency, Caltrans, and that the the biggest, the big impact that they have. Depending on the priority, right, that this, a certain intersection or corner may have, it is up to the city to determine how quickly they wanna engage and if they have the funding to, well, first to have internal conversations with Caltrans and other partner agencies, but then potentially needing to hire, write a traffic engineering consultant, um, that has the, that is equipped with the tools to then facilitate more conversations to deal with the complexities with freeway interchanges and they, uh, you know, the impact that they're having there. I just, Andrew, I don't know, like, how quickly those conversations traditionally have been with your Caltrans district in the past, if you could jump in here, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, happy to um jump in and just note that I think the active transportation plan, having an adopted plan, will really give us um, you know, foothold to have that conversation with Caltrans. Um, it is Caltrans right away, so any improvements would need to be in partnership with Caltrans. Um, you know, Caltrans is actively reviewing the the plan, and during that conversation, the review will, you know, that'll start the seed. We'll plant the seed, um, to looking at some of these improvements, um, where the city and Caltrans right away interact.
Great, yeah, so just to clarify, cause we we have, what is it, the bike plan that's over ten years old now? And there were some improvements called out on the overpass that were never implemented, and I was told that it's due to lack of coordination with Caltrans, or we would need to coordinate with Tr- Caltrans there. Am I hearing correctly that you think under the ATP framework, those conversations become easier to have? It's called out appropriately here, and um, I guess, yeah, do you think it, just having it in the, called out in the AP, ATP as is is going to make that work easier, or is there anything else we should add strategically here in the APA, ATP to make uh that more of a strategy and goal here, so that we don't wind up, you know, twelve years down the road yet again with no improvements to those uh areas?
I think it certainly wouldn't hurt to add additional language, um, beyond just study this area. Um, if there could be some recommendations that are, with the caveat that it'll have to be in coordination with Caltrans? I think that's appropriate.
Okay, so guidance around priorities and 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 timing, something like that?
Exactly, yeah.
Thank you. Um, okay, so, last question, um, and it also was called out a little bit in Commissioner Berlin, Berlin's discussion, but um, so quick build as a strategy I think was only mentioned once in the document, uh, kind of a, uh, a minor recommendation, it appeared. Uh, do you have experience with other ATPs and that may have implemented quick build as more of a uh, core part of their strategy or toolkit? I know, I I think cities like San Jose have uh stand out as cities that have maybe implemented a core, a better or a strong quick build program. Um, do you, how, do you see that as successful parts of other ATPs? And and uh, was there any discussion around incorporating some sort of quick build strategy here? Or does that even, you know, is that even acceptable in terms of how Caltrans reviews ATPs and and grants funding for um, ATP projects?
Yeah, no, I love that question. Quick builds are strategies and projects are some of the best ways to test out some of these recommendations that could be a little bit more controversial, right? Um, or quick builds have proven super successful, which is educating the public, I mean, that's the point of doing quick build. It's an opportunity to, let's be honest, to have a way to maybe back out, right, if if something is maybe not successful without, you know, telling the community, right, that you've spent all this money on something that you may need to rip out later after spending millions and millions of of dollars. Uh, we love quick builds, uh, that that language is always included as a minimum, as a, as a standard recommendation. It is up to the community that we work in and, um, you know, elected officials and staff to tell us how much more of a priority that should be, like in the narrative or in the recommendations. Uh, but absolutely, there's, I mean, there's grants out there completely dedicated for quick build projects. Um, there's, there's money out there to let cities like yourself test things out, um, and then, you know, and it it just helps everybody with studies and transit analysis and statistics on, you know, how certain things may how, and their hopefully positive impact may be having on a community. It has backfired many times with some cities, right, but, you know, we want, let's stay optimistic, right? And 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 more often than not, though, quick builds do lead to that kind of successful, more long-term implementation. Some cities even through their quick builds, they do like a semi-permanent quick build that if people are happy with, they'll just leave them on many years after, you know, the quick build would have expired, so I've seen all kinds. So I've seen all kinds of combinations, and if it's your recommendation, right, to maybe make that language a little bit stronger, I'm more than happy to, you know, have the conversation with Andrew and Brian and make sure that we add a little bit more of that language. But yeah, I would hopefully, I'd love to see you all do quick build projects someday on, or some of the pet projects, or the bike projects, or even traffic calming. A lot of cities do like, they'll test out traffic circles, or they'll test out curb extensions, or they'll test out, you know, Class 4 separated bikeways on a multi-block section to see things. So, yeah, I would hope you all do that in the near future.
Okay, yeah, great, thank you. I appreciate your time and just the overall comprehensiveness of this plan and the process here. It's been really great to watch, so thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks. I want to say thank you for the presentation as well. And then I just had one kind of overarching question. If you could kind of walk us through how this plan functions to help us access grant dollars? Like, how do we, how does that process work? If you could kind of spell that out for us?
Absolutely, and Andrew, feel free to jump in, too, if I miss something. But as Andrew has mentioned, adopting an ATP, this is a, this is a type of document that across the country is more, it's a, it has, it carries weight to it, it carries power. It's a document that was expected that through the consultant and the city and through community engagement, that you've gone through the steps needed to identify priorities. And it's a document that, once it gets adopted by City Council, will carry that weight for grant opportunities. As Andrew mentioned, most, if there's a grant out there, like Caltrans ATP program that they do every two years, one of the checkboxes, have you adopted an Active Transportation Plan? So that alone is going to unlock additional opportunities. But there's other things, too, right? If you're looking, for example, at stormwater grants, right? There, if you can reference an ATP or project where there's an urban greening and stormwater, by, and then by missing, you know, putting in a missing sidewalk, right? You have an opportunity to address stormwater through that. You can start checking off all those things. These agencies know what an ATP is, and so that's just going to just give you that power to hopefully successfully win additional grants. And even just amongst yourselves, right, and your elected officials, this is a plan that will carry its weight. And so when you're doing, like, you know, fiscal planning every year for CIP planning, you'll be able to use this document and know that it's embedded, and it carries community engagement feedback as well to make those decisions. So it really, Commissioner really does set you up for success in the future.
Thank you, that's really helpful, just to kind of have that big picture. And then I did have a few little places where I drive, so I kind of know. And Commissioner Buchanan brought up the Crown Hill. I know that it's not within the ATP to say we can't have parking there, but as I'm just looking at the way that street functions, it is literally like a parking lot for like two half-an-hour periods. And I just don't even know where you would put a, I wouldn't safely, even as like an adult rider, feel comfortable going there. So is, I'm just a little confused as to if our plan says, this is what we think we would like, but it's not really feasible given the vehicle traffic on the street? How does, how does that interact with what our, what our plan says versus what the reality is? Is our, is our plan saying we want to move to this from where we are right now?
It's a little bit of both, Commissioner. It's, you know, acknowledging the challenges, such as you and the other commissioner talked about, but it's also thinking about the mentality of, are we planning for, the example we use often is, are we planning for Thanksgiving Black Friday? You know, like the parking lots, right? Are we designing parking lots and shopping centers for the one day? It's similarly with bike planning recommendations is, we know we have constraints around morning and afternoon rushes, but is that always going to dictate what the rest of, like, the percentage of the usage of the road can, could be handling? And it's, so that's part of the conversation, right? That, the kind of mentality and that understanding. But it's also looking at, like, the rest of the context around, right? We're also making recommendations on branch heading to Huasna as well, and that kind of recommendation of a Class 1 facility, very complicated and expensive, but it would really provide, you know, a much-needed connection for the neighborhood into the village and back and forth. I mean, Crown Hill is such a good example of a tough street, but at least through some signage and through some pavement markings, we are starting to tell the community, tell the neighborhood, hey, expect to have cyclists here. We need to, again, shift the culture a little bit, you know, let people know that the streets are for everybody. So it's a little bit of everything, Commissioner. I wish I had a more straightforward answer to that, but it's a bouncy.
That's actually really helpful for me to understand the way it works. No, that's very helpful, thank you. And then we also have, I was just thinking about this as we were talking, as Commissioner Buchanan was talking about the 101 overpass on Grand, and then also that Briscoe Tunnel. Really, for, when we're talking about safe routes to school, everybody who has elementary-age kids who lives on the east side has to go through one of those passages to get to an elementary school. I think most are Ocean View zoned. So I have a friend who's, who biked with both of her kids all through and went through that Briscoe Tunnel and was almost hit many times. And I see that's also a Class 3. How would that work with, like, the lanes? Would it, how would that work with the lanes that are there? Because you've got that freeway on-ramp lane, and then you've got the through-traffic lane. Like, how would that work?
Yes, that is one of the hardest intersections and areas within your city, probably on par with the area around Paulding. And in a perfect world, Commissioner, we needed to completely reconstruct that entire area, that, the Briscoe interchange. And so we literally have the walls right there, we have the limited space. And so we literally can't do anything but at least stripe and sign and pray that people are being good humans to each other and trying to share the space, which I know often, most oftentimes, it's not, that's not what happens. But that was, because of the literal physical limitations, that's why we're trying to at least acknowledge that signage and striping to help facilitate that. But honestly, that whole thing just needs to be completely reconstructed. And I don't know, Commissioner, how and when.
And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm sorry. I don't mean to, like, pick out the worst parts, it's just, those happen to be the ones I go through all the time. And I'm like, ah, I wouldn't put my kid on a bike through there, but okay.
No, no, and, yeah, absolutely. And I'm really empathetic with that, yeah.
I think what I'm understanding from you, and what I really appreciate, is we're, we're not just doing a physical plan. We're also talking about a culture shift, a mindset shift. And this is going to take time, and it's not something that's going to happen overnight. So I appreciate you helping me understand that as we, as we transition to a more active transportation city, there are going to be challenges. So thank you for that. And then, am I, I just have one more, like, kind of nitty-gritty question, and it's not a bad question. It's not, it's not like the worst street. I was just verifying, on the plan for the proposed bike network, you have multi-use path that goes all the way down the creek through the whole city limits? Is that what's in the plan?
Yes, actually, I appreciate you putting that out. That is a very nuanced project, so that has been identified in other planning projects as well. The reality, though, is, so one, it was acknowledged in, like, SLOCOG, some of the countywide projects. It was also included in the circulation element update that was completed a couple of years ago. We carried it over for consistency purposes, but the, there will, there are challenges with the natural ecological components of the creek itself as well. So if anything, it's just ensuring that, and maybe I may want to revisit the language around that, but it's real understanding, is it a multi-use path or is it more of a self-service trail? There is conflicting, you know, if you think about the other documents that the county that have been done in the past, it, it's almost like we need to understand the environmental constraints along the creek itself. It's not like a flood control channel, right? Where you have, like, a service road along a, so maybe would you want to add a little additional language for that? But again, it would be, it, it sounds great, right? Having this, a trail or a path, right, that runs along the whole creek.
I know, it's like, that sounds amazing.
It sounds amazing. And we ended up removing other things, too, like, for example, between, like, along Rancho and some of the northwest area of the city. There were other previously proposed Class 1 facilities through your beautiful hillsides with actual really tough topography and challenges. And we ended up removing those from this plan, because we were doing some of that bedding. But because the Arroyo Grande Creek had all this other previously acknowledged, you know, recommendations, we just carried it over into this one as well. But it will require extensive environmental and structural analysis if that is something that needs to happen, and you all want to happen.
And that, that's, so that's, you know, kind of like a wishlist, moonshot kind of option? Is, am I understanding that right?
I would say, if I'm being honest, it's a long-term project, just with how complex it is.
Okay.
From, you know, an aerial standpoint, yeah, it looks great, right? It connects all cities, but you're going to need to do a lot of work and a lot of studies in order to chip away at it, and it could be controversial, right? Because I know there's a lot of people who are sensitive to the ecological components of a creek like that.
Right, thank you. I think that, those are all of my questions. Commissioners, any other questions that came up for you while we were talking? No, okay. Seeing none from the commission, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Do we have any members of the public who would like to make a comment on this item this time?
Good evening. Commissioners, my name is Rick Ellison. I'm the Executive Director of BikeSlo County, also a resident of the unincorporated part of Arroyo Grande. I'm also, or was a member of the stakeholder working group. So I'm familiar with the plan and the presentation. I want to just say a few words that, first, I'd like to recognize the Arroyo Grande leadership for getting the grant, soliciting, and working with the consultant to come up with the plan and the engagement of the community at which they have done and presented tonight. The, I think the process is admirable. It is a guidebook for you and City Council and city leadership to follow over the next 10 or maybe more years. And without this planning, we wouldn't have any kind of direction. And so the guidebook, I think, is important. I do want to give you a little perspective, though, that it's an uphill battle in a number of ways. So there's two national rating systems for cities. The American League of Bicyclists, oldest bicycling organization in the country, founded in 1880, has a bicycle-friendly community designation. As far as I can tell, Arroyo Grande used to have a bronze designation. It's on Branch Mill, I think there's still, I think there's one sign that I've seen. And, but I don't think you're listed currently as a bicycle-friendly community. Tonight, actually, at this moment, the Luciamar Board is acknowledging, for the first time ever, a elementary school as a bicycle-friendly business, because they don't have a classification for elementary schools. But the school leadership, right now, at the board is being recognized. So they, Oceano has taken a, even though they're unincorporated, they have, really, through the leadership of the school, has penetrated from, you know, from kindergarten through, through sixth grade for, to make bicycle-friendly. By the way, my clock's not going, but you can tell me when my, when my time is up. So participating in something like that, it puts more pressure on city staff, because they have to analyze, they have to do the surveys, they have to do the traffic studies, they have to know a lot of the information that was presented in this plan. But measuring on an every-two-year basis, I think that's one of the ways, besides the other suggestions. The other, People for Bikes has a geographic data analyzing of communities. And the, in the 2024 data, out of 2,579 cities, Arroyo Grande is rated pretty much right in the middle of the world. Number 922 in the U.S., number 225 in the Pacific region, and number 155 in the state of California. So they analyze traffic patterns, access to schools, access to hospitals, access to retail, access to where people, people live and move, access to transit. And currently, Arroyo Grande has a rating, a network rating of 25 out of 100. The national average is 28. So I think there's progress that, that we, wow, this is a great community. I love living here. I ride my bike through, through all parts of this community all the time. I just want to, this plan is important for us to set the aspiration of where we can be. There's also the impediments of funding, obviously. That's one of the things in the plan, that the details, you know, the devil's in the details of what would the creek path cost? What would Briscoe, what would be all the different changes? But I think the, I think the work that city has done is great, but there's more to be done. So the opportunity to be here tonight, to listen to the presentation, though I had heard the presentation before, I think is, it's important for you and for the city to do. The other thing I want to mention is that Safe Routes to School is mentioned a couple of times in the report, it's been mentioned tonight. I'm the Certified League Instructor for BikeSlo County. And at Ocean View, at Harlow, and at Fair Grove, I've done on-bike education for all fourth and fifth graders through a funding for, through SLOCOG. There's more opportunity, we're working on, possibly working on some middle-school-type programs. So anyway, I'm happy to be a partner with you, and I think there's a lot of opportunity for the future. So thank you for allowing me to say a few words.
Thank you so much, we appreciate that, thank you. Anyone else from the public who'd like to make a comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll ask if there's anyone online.
Vice chair, we have nobody online to comment.
Okay, so I will go ahead and close the public comment on that item and bring it back to the Board for deliberation, discussion, further discussion.
I just had a couple of quick things. I think a few really good points were brought up, like changing language, be more explicit from Commissioner Buchanan regarding community feedback to address prioritizing with competing interests, whether it's parking or driving, that's, that's going to be an uphill battle. So being more explicit that that is something that we need to put into the ATP would be helpful. Another area where I would like to see the language strengthened is regarding the need for the studies. So specifically, page 162, the traffic studies to improve the under-freeway issues. Because it seems like without those studies being prioritized, we're never going to close the active transportation gaps that exist. I know that our city has tried in recent years to create a roundabout and completely overhaul Briscoe. We've run into a lot of hurdles, so that's not going to be without its challenges. But as it currently stands, the language feels like a blip on the radar in this particular ATP. So the good news is, Priority Project 1 for East Grand Avenue, I mean, the highlighted sections do cover the Briscoe interchange right there. So it's kind of implied, but I'd like for it to be explicit, if possible. Those are just my, really, quick notes.
Just, just to confirm, I think the Grand Avenue, it covers the Grand overpass, not the Briscoe, not the underpass, right, the overpass? No, I'm just, is that what you were talking about?
Yes, you're right.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Buchanan, did you want to have any closing thoughts or comments?
Yeah, I just want to, I think, two comments. One is, I think it's impressive and transformative if we were able to adopt- I think it's impressive and transformative if we were able to adopt this plan, uh especially having Grand Ave as a top priority here. That that's uh that takes a lot of uh. You know courageous planning to uh say that we wanna transform a corridor of the city like that and uh there are. You know. Potential political implications there, but uh in the end, that is gonna benefit um. Everyone in this city. In terms of making, turning Grand Ave into a more productive place for everyone. Making it more walkable, bikable, more friendly to business. Friendly to housing and other uses on that street. Uh, so just having that. Laid out explicitly in a plan like this, I think would be really cool to see. And then second, yeah, I do think we do need to. Call out more explicitly. The roadblocks, the impediments here like that, like the Caltrans traffic studies. Because any network we're hoping to build here is only gonna be as good as its. Least effective sections, right? We we wouldn't. Build and go and, you know, spend a lot of money transforming. A partial network only to have no improvement to the actual use, because anyone's gonna look at that network and say, you know, why would I? I don't get any benefit out of traveling, you know, half a mile on a safer street when I still have to go through the dangerous part. Uh, that doesn't affect my decision uh making or, you know, how I'm gonna send my kid to school. So calling out those impediments that are beyond our control, like working with Caltrans, I think are really gonna be really important in this plan, so I'd like to see that called out more explicitly. In in whatever manner really the staff would. Like to see there that makes their job easier in terms of prioritizing that work and keeping it. Uh, on schedule. And then also, yeah, calling out notes, any notes around. Alternatives we might have for specific routes if we reprioritize things like on-street parking. I think that'd be helpful to have in this plan, so we don't lose track of. Where we're making assumptions on. Specific use cases for certain streets. And then also, uh I'd I'd love to see more of a of a higher level strategy or component in this uh plan for uh quick build. You know, if. Staff and fellow commissioners were on board with making that a just a larger tool in the toolkit here. Because, you know, we we have things, again, using Safe Routes to School and as as an example here, again, I think we had. In the report here, maybe two incident, two. Incidents with pedestrians or bicyclists bicyclists per year around there. It feels bad to say that. You know, we acknowledge that. Two people are gonna get injured around schools per year. And we'll improve that over ten years. If there's a way to to. Shorten that timeframe, get quicker feedback. With less cost upfront. I think we should pursue that, so I'd love to see more uh more of a. Again, a a stronger mention of a quick build in our toolkit here in the ATP, um if that can be added in here. With those three main points, though. I I think I'm I'm yeah, I'd like to adopt this plan or recommend adopting this plan.
Can I can I ask really quick, where is quick build in here now? Like, did you have a citation of where you saw it?
There is a, there's a small section on uh page. One seventy-eight. There's a mention. And that's really the only time it's called out.
Yeah, demonstration projects.
But but I know there are examples of cities who adopt this as more of a core strategy for potential improvements. Again, I'm mentioning San Jose, cause I've. Seen some examples of of that. Uh, and read about some examples of that, but. Yeah, I'm pulling up this section now. So this is, i- it's. This comes down to the encouragement. It this is bucketed under encouragement, where I feel like it could be. Uh, more effective if it were under. Engineering or evaluation. Something that uh pauses it, posits it. More as a. Really effective tool that we can use rather than just talk about.
I agree with en- placing it under engineering. I think that would be the most uh appropriate spot.
That's great feedback.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Berlin?
Yeah, just in uh echo ditto what my colleagues have just said. Uh, I do also agree with uh Commissioner Buchanan's. And and I think Mr. Leone touched upon the fact that if we do adopt a more. Uh, quick build aspect. Emphasis on some of these things to get them out there. Not just from um. An PR standpoint, but from an engineering evaluation standpoint. There is a actually a fair amount of money. I think Mr. Leone ta- talked the fact that there are grants out there to do these kind of experimental projects, so we can get. Access to money, which I think is gonna be the limiting factor in a lot of our projects, unfortunately. So, uh that being said, I I do really like the comprehensive nature of what you've built in the ATP. I think it's. A vital planning document. I would love to see some more teeth put into it as far as proactive things that the city can do. In in regards to planning and proactively, I mean, we talk about Caltrans, obviously, because that's the main corridor, but we also have. Significant neighbors in Grover Beach, which is changing their whole makeup considerably, as well as Pismo Beach, so. And SlowCog, that's their job, is to help cities work together better, so I think we really need to build allies with our immediate neighbors. And um whatever we can put into the language of this document that implements that proactively, I'm in favor of that too. So and I think um both of my colleagues already ta- talked about that some too. I I like what you've done, though. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just to piggyback that off of that too. I think if I had to pick one thing out of here that would be my highlight would be. The Grand Avenue, which was that priority one, um and that's just a no-brainer to partner with Grover. They've already. You know, started improvements um along Grand to make. That a more desirable place um to walk and bike, so I'd love to see us partner um there. I really just wanted to take a minute before we move off of this to just really call out. And shout out you all for the effort to engage the community. It was it it was really impressive to see all of the different modalities you used, on the amount of time that was taken. And and I and I really appreciate that. I also really appreciated the attention. To equity in the plan and making sure that those priority areas are are serving communities that really need them. And I also really appre- appreciated uh the review of the that toolkit uh chapter, because I don't know a lot about this. This isn't my field. And just to understand what some of the different options are. I think that kind of goes along with what Commissioner Buchanan was saying as far as these quick build demo. Like, I'm seeing it as like a demo project. I think that'll also help with the culture shift. If people can see what we're talking about, I'm a real visual person, so I need to see it. Um, and if they can see, oh, this is what a um bike share or or charging port can look like. Um, I think that'll help us do that culture shift um that we're that we're talking about here tonight, but I'm really excited about this project. Or adopting this plan. I do agree with my fellow commissioners about um. The quick build idea. I appreciate you calling that out, Commissioner Buchanan. Um, so I think those are all my comments on this at this time. If there are no, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Sacerson, go ahead.
Sorry, there was one part um about in recommendations that I wanted to point attention to, because I feel like it. If this plan gets adopted, it's a very. I'm gonna use the word loosely, easy. It's still gonna require a lot of work, so I'm really sorry ahead of time, but um the education aspect. Recognize the importance of addressing the, and I'm quoting here, the barriers that prevent trips from being safe. Especially for the youth, because we've talked about the kids a lot, uh the elderly, the disabled, lower-income populations who can't afford. Operate or choose to forego vehicle ownership. That's such a huge segment of our population that when when you incorporate all of those those things, that. Moving forward, before we get the grant money, before we have the means to to actively. Build on these other things, we are, you guys are clearly very good at community outreach. So doing the same things you're already doing, but to educate and actually work on the culture shift part first seems like a really. Easy way to go. And then we also have those e-bike incentives coming from the state level. That's coming, what, in like a month or two? That I think we can just. Throw that into the mix to be like, hey, guys, did you know, like, this whole outreach section of it? It was such a great start to this ATP um as it currently exists, that I feel like just building on that and continuing that would be something that I would. Encourage. Um, that's just more of a little comment than anything, but just wanted to say that, but thank you again very, very much for all the work that you guys have put into this and to the consultants. It's. It's very comprehensive.
Thank you, Commissioner. If there are no further comments, um I'll entertain a motion. On this item.
Uh, I have a motion, um and I'll just. Outline what I think are the. Uh, three other priorities here that we'd like to see. Added if that um. If that fits. I think staff has probably captured some of that, but I'll call them out here specifically. So um. Move that uh planning planning commission adopt a resolution. Uh, recommending the city council adopt the active transportation plan. Uh, with the following. I'll call them improvements, uh one being further clarification and accountability for coordination with Caltrans on Grand Ave and other highway-related segments. Two being higher pri- higher prioritization of quick build engineering. And three being clearer presentation of route alternatives with regards to parking reconfiguration. I'm happy to change any of that if the wording would make sense otherwise. Yes, sorry. Yes, and also find that the adoption of the active transportation plan is statutorily exempt from review under SEQA. Uh, and and under Public Resources Code Section. Two ten eight zero dot two zero and two ten eight zero dot two five.
I'll second.
We have a motion with a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Buchanan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Berlin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roof?
Yes. Thank you for that. And thank you, thank you, staff, for.
Thank you all. Appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Leone.
Have a good night. Talk to you soon.
Good night. That'll close um. Item eight, so moving on to item nine, the non-public hearing items of which we have none. Um, so we'll move on to notice of administrative items since November nineteenth and also have none there. And then um I will move to item eleven, Commission Communications. Does anyone have any communications? I just have, I just have one um thing I wanted to say, which is, and I'm sure she's not watching online right now, but. A big thank you to Commissioner Maravilla for her chair of the commission. I was really grateful to serve with her and um wish her all the best on and as a city council member. I'm glad she's staying with the city and we can continue to benefit from her. Wisdom and care and dedication and congratulations to our um fellow new council member Lo and Mayor Ray Resum. So that that's my communication. I will move on to um staff communications.
Thank you. Uh, Brian Pedrati, Community Development Director, uh just a couple. The ADU or the new accessory dwelling unit ordinance was approved on December tenth. Uh, by the city council. Uh, that came through the planning commission earlier. As uh Vice Mayor Roof had said, there is a transition meeting. As well on the tenth uh with the city council, where uh the new commissioner or new council members took their seats. Uh, it was it was um well-attended. And then that will mean new appointees for planning commission, uh ARC and the other boards that uh are part of the city. Uh, so that look for that to happen um over the next month or so. The Lyerly Lane Appeal was continued uh from. The December meeting out to January fourteenth, so that will be heard by the city council at that point. And uh. That's about it all in there.
And just one quick question, since this is my first time through an election cycle. If the person who appointed me is still on their term, I'm. Good. I don't have to reapply or anything like that.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, um I will adjourn the meeting at seven forty-four. Thank you, everybody, and thanks for your attendance. We appreciate it.